The Tuesday, June 4th, meeting of the Monmouth City Council. And please start with our rule call, Phyllis Bowman.
Hold on.
Hold on.
Counselor Belts?
Here.
Counselor Carey?
Here.
Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Counselor Sharmar?
Here.
Counselor Schinkel?
Here.
Counselor Silbernagle?
Here.
Mayor Koontz?
Here.
And our flag salute. And Laurel, would you please lead us in that?
Yes.
Soon as I get out of my chair. I know. All right, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Sharm. This evening, we have several calls to order and dismissals as we will be having our regular session here. We will also be having a work session, and then we will be convening also as our Urban Renewal Agency. And all of these things in service of approving our budget, which is why our lovely Finance Director gets the starring role tonight, because by law, we have to do all of this by June 30th. So, we have a few items of business to take care of. And first of all, I would like to welcome our audience this evening and let you know that comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Citizens Comment on Agenda Version 3.0. If you wish to speak to the council, please fill out a comment card, and please turn it into our city recorder. There are some more coming, thank you. Speakers' comments in this form are limited to three minutes, but the council welcomes additional information in writing. And typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the council to review an issue. However, the mayor or councillors may ask for additional clarifying information, or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communication, and if so, what method is preferred. But thank you all for your attendance at tonight's City Council.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to step on your lines. Just in case anyone is here for the budget, we should encourage them to tell them not to speak to the budget and comment, but to wait until the budget hearing.
Good, thank you, yes. And that, we do have a budget hearing on both the city's regular budget, which includes our capital improvement budget, and then we have an additional separate hearing from the Urban Renewal Agency. So both of those would have public comment at that time.
And also the revenue sharing.
And also our revenue sharing, which is, requires another hearing. So, we will have several opportunities to speak about budget, and we will take comments from George at that time. We have another general comment during Citizens Comments, so. Thank you very much. We will begin with our consent calendar. And again, we've been busy with our budget meetings and things, so we actually have three items to approve under our consent calendar. One is the minutes of the joint council meeting of April 23rd, and that was a meeting that we held at Polk County Fire Station. We held that as a joint meeting with the City Council from Independence to talk about a potential joint agreement on our continuum of care situation we've mentioned. We also have the minutes of our May 21st meeting and our May 21st work session. So, if anyone's had a chance to look at those, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve.
I move approval of all three.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any other comments or noted changes? All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Thank you. We'll go on to our reports, and I don't have a lot to report as the mayor tonight. There have been a few things I've attended, but mostly, mostly been working on city business, reading through our budget, looking at these materials. So I will defer to my fellow councillors and start for council representatives tonight. Counselor Carey, we'll start with Planning Commission.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the Planning Commission, we're going to be in a, in a work session with them tonight, reviewing the housing needs analysis, which I'm sure that we all read with rapt attention. And so, really to talk much more about that, that's been the, the primary focus, and will be the focus tonight. So, that really is all that I have.
Thank you. And Counselor Sharm?
All right, the, the Monmouth Senior Advisory Board met on May 28th, last Tuesday, with a very engaged group of people. Last month, May, was older citizens, older Americans' month, and they had a very cool By City event where the book A Man Called Ove was read as a book club experience at the, both the Independence and the Monmouth libraries, and then everybody gathered at the Senior Center to watch the movie. There are monthly classes going on, sponsored by the Alzheimer's Association. On Wednesdays at 1:30, there will be a creative writing class, and if you want to try your hand at writing, you don't need to prepare anything ahead of time, just come and do some free writing. There will be a conversational Spanish class on Wednesdays at 11:00 a.m., so if you want to brush up on your Espanol, that's a good place to do it. There will be diabetes prevention classes in autumn, this coming autumn. The Polk County Behavioral Health Class will be six weeks long. It will be looking at mental health and habits. And then there will also be a class on mental health first aid. If you run into somebody who is in a high state of anxiety or concern, it will help you to know what to do effectively. Most of these classes are free, and our seniors are busy getting ready to decorate their float for the parade, the Monmouth Independence Rotary Club's Grand Fourth of July Parade. And the most important man in the parade is over here, because he has the starter's whistle. And then they've got a lot of, lot of travel classes coming up out to Depot Bay. They went to Florence for lunch at Yahats, and this September, there's going to be a five-day trip to eastern Oregon, and they've called that the Great Adventure, and it's going to be for 10 people. So, if any of that sounds interesting to you, it's, the Senior Center is right next door. So, hop over there and, and join up.
Sounds great, thank you. And Counselor Silbernagle, did we meet with the Tree Advisory Board?
Great. Tree Advisory Board did not meet in May, and they are next scheduled to meet June 20th, 7:00 p.m. in the Senior Center as well.
Well, this will be a busy place. Counselor Lopez, I believe Minnet had a board meeting, so as our representative, why don't you fill us in on that?
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Minnet has been, has been fairly busy. As we go through the budgeting process here at, at the city level, Minnet goes through their own budgeting process as well. And a little bit of, a little bit of understanding about the makeup of this, I think, tells us a lot about the organization as a whole. So, the, the board of Minnet is comprised half of individuals from Monmouth and half of individuals from Independence, and that extends to the, to the Budget Committee as well. And so, six individuals from Monmouth, six from Independence come together to put together the, the Minnet budget. A lot of work went into the budget by staff ahead of time, as, as well it did here. And on the whole, things went fairly smoothly as far as, as far as approval of the budget. There was a lot of, a lot of good conversation about how some of these choices, about how these dollars move around, impacts service and impacts future plans, and a lot of questioning and oversight there. But on the whole, relatively smooth. One thing that, that I'd like to take an opportunity to, and I'll try to be brief as, as a whole in my remarks, but an opportunity to really reiterate the, the history of Minnet, because it's something that I feel like isn't well-understood, especially to newer comers of, newer comers to the area. So, Minnet was, was founded originally by the two cities to provide rural broadband access in an area where other companies refused or couldn't provide that access. Fast forward, fast forward to today's, today's meetings, you know, there is still a very close tie between Minnet and the cities, and a lot of that has to come, comes from, comes from the dollar standpoint. The cities jointly funded it. Monmouth funding came through the Power and Light. And Minnet still now owes Power and Light money's back. With the Dallas expansion, we are on track to, on track to start making headway with that, and year over year, it continues to, continues to look rosier, although it's still a very, a very challenging road ahead. But, but, but things are, you know, things are moving along there. A couple, a couple points that I'd like to bring regarding Minnet that have come up recently. There's, there's a systems upgrade, B-PON to X-G-PON upgrade. These are the backend of the system that allows internet to flow into the home. None of this has to do on any customer level. And originally, it was scheduled to, to extend for, for some time yet, for another, oh, I believe, two years from now. That has been, that has been sped up and should be, should be completed by the end of this year. We actually saw some savings due to that because of being able to get ahead of materials purchases that now are falling under nationwide tariffs. So, that went well. Easy video transition is going on right now. Have heard of a handful of problems. I very, very directly encourage any, any customers that are experiencing problems to reach directly out to, to Minnet. The customer service representatives there are top-notch, and all are right here in the community, live in the community. Many of them graduated from Western, and their job is really to help. To my knowledge, all the problems that have come through me or my way have been, have been resolved as of right now, but the traditional video will end at the end of this month. And then something that we're working on here for the, the near future is the Lifeline Program, which we're submitting an application for right now, which would allow subsidies for, for low-income households toward internet access. More, more of that to come. It's, we're, we're toward the beginning of the process, but it's something we're actively working on.
Yes, thank you.
Just a quick question, was this the first month that Minnet began passing the franchise fees along to consumers? My bill went up $4 this month.
I don't believe so. I would need to double-check to be certain.
No, it's not. It's not the first month. We've been, the city has been receiving the franchise fees for, I want to say, this will be the third quarter that we'll be getting the franchise.
Really? Okay.
February of last year.
I'm trying to think, yeah, it's, it's certainly not that new.
Yeah. Okay. Well, something was on my bill. $4. Okay. Take a look or give them a call.
And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much for that. Busy, busy time for them too, and thank you for the update on the easy video. I know that is a cause of concern for folks, and some people have found the transition easier than others, so appreciate a little bit of feedback on that. That's great.
And any feedback that can be provided to Minnet regarding easy video is, is very valuable. This is something that they're, they're actively, actively taking feedback into account and, and trying to really work to improve.
I think it's, it's interesting to note that other video providers, other, are going the same way, that that apparent, that's, we've known it's been the future for some time, and Minnet knew it would have to get out of the traditional cable business at some point, and making that change now is, as I say, at least we're not stuck with old slower-speed internet, right? Typical high-speed internet even would be the delivery service for especially rural communities. The fact that we will be able to make that transition more smoothly than many rural communities is certainly a, an advantage to us, so thank you. And we'll take community announcements at this point. I know we had a health fair in the park. Do you have a little bit on that for us? Counselor Belts was a part of that, it's her real-day job.
I was putting multiple hats on that day. Yeah, the, there was a, you know, in fact, I don't even know who the applicant was, but I know the Parks and Rec Department gave a, a small grant to a local group to put on a health and fitness fair. They had children's events, they had pretty much all of the fitness-related, health-related organizations in the community were invited to participate, and so there was Zumba classes and my organization, Chariots, because we, we support active transportation. It was well-attended for a first-time event, I will say that. There were a number of people that came by the booths, a local nurse who's looking to do some, some shadowing of people doing events like this kind of thing as part of her school project, and so those are some good connections that we made. I would certainly encourage people to attend something like this again. I think it's just the opportunity to, to learn about local businesses. The Firehouse Fitness folks are the, what are they called, CrossFit were there, and Studio Fuego, where they do the Zumba dancing, so it was, it was a really good event. I'm glad we did it. Yeah, so thank you for asking.
I know you were promoting that. So, other upcoming events, besides our Fourth of July activities, we know we've got that coming up. Anything else?
We have a Western Oregon University graduation coming up on June 15th. That'll put a few more people in town, for sure.
Should be a little crazy.
Father's Day weekend, right?
Yeah.
And I know many of the businesses are being encouraged to be opened a little later that, that evening.
And Discover My Town, so the universe, or the Chamber of Commerce partnering with businesses in the community to have special hours and specialty offerings for Discover My Town that weekend. Again, I'll put in a plug for our Arts and Culture Commission doing a pop-up art show on Friday and Saturday for certain hours down in the Old Marketplace, in the New York Bagel Shop, so.
So if there are artists that are interested, how would they find out about this?
If you email citihall@ci.monmouth.or.us. We are taking information from artists who might be interested for that, so. And any other community announcements? Thanks. So tonight, you might have noticed, I lost a little bit of, of color in his hair over there, our city manager, maybe some facial hair. So, Scott McClure is off this evening, so our acting city manager, also our Power and Light Superintendent, so Chuck Thurman is with us tonight, and does have a report for us this evening. So, thank you Chuck for filling in and spending some more time with us, and.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mayor Koontz. I'd like to share with you some of the project updates that we've got going on right now. Highway 99, be careful out there. They have changed the striping on the road, and it is a little different on the north and the south. If you're gonna leave By Mart, leave via Dairy Queen. Don't try to go out to the highway, because there's equipment out there, and the nose of your car is in the lane before you can see what's coming either way. They're working diligently to get caught up on schedule. A few little things will begin to happen on Main Street, but they're over-excavating now the majority of the roadway, and it has begun, but it is the onset of a major mess. Be very, very cautious out there. Building plans have come in for the S-curves. We have the ones for the tractor supply. Today, we received ones for a grocery store that will sit there. They do announce on the plans who it is, but it's not my place to make that announcement. But, we have the plans, we have the estimates for everything, so that's moving along very well, as expected. South Town Apartments, 119 units next to the new Power and Light headquarters, is well underway. We expect to begin our cabling there next week, if they finish all of the trenching. They're, they're pretty close, and they'll be energized by the end of the month, which is absolutely great. Gentle Woods Park, we were replacing the roof on the picnic shelter, and it is almost done. There's just a little bit left to do. The dark brown new metal roofing and the style of seams that it have will serve us well into the future. Much easier maintenance, the needles and leaves will run right off, so that's a, a good plus that you'll see over that way. Two other things that we had going on down by Power and Light was, we did host the Oregon Municipal Electric Utilities Group today. Eleven utilities were present in our small, small conference room that is not so small anymore, that we could actually host them. We didn't need to borrow the library. A, a lot of good folks from the, well, from the representative of 13 municipal utilities in Oregon, we had 11, 11 of them here, so it was a good representation.
And can you just let us know, since you are very familiar with that group, what other cities have municipal electric utilities?
Very similar to us would be Forest Grove, because they also have a, a university in their city. Ashland has a university in their city. We also have Banden, Springfield, oh my goodness, Eugene is the largest of the municipals. We have Hermiston, we have Milton-Freewater, we have Cascade Locks, we have Canby, and I've forgotten one other.
So, similar size. Eugene and Springfield, obviously much larger, but, and then, I'm just seeing of school district size. Hermiston's a little larger than us, but most of those are smaller than we are, so.
That's correct.
Okay.
We are, we, we were the second smallest. We've grown. And by the end of next year, if we do have the 400 meters we see coming at us, then we will surpass, and we will have Banden below us, we will have Drain, was the other one I had forgotten, Drain below us, and then we will pass Milton-Freewater.
Or below Drain.
So we're moving up the ranks, which is interesting, because we haven't increased our urban growth boundary. We are doing a lot of infill, which is fantastic.
Okay.
Lastly, we had the opportunity to have auditors here for our interim onsite audit. I think it went very well. They came down to Power and Light, had a discussion with us, but I wanted to share just a little bit Larry Thornton in the Building Department, Krist in the Library, Suzanne and I each had interviews with the auditors, and they came to our departments to check things out. During a portion of that, Scott McClure, City Manager, had come down, so I got pulled away into a meeting with him, and I asked one of my staff, Laura Kreschensohn, to meet with the auditor, and then I'll, I'll come back out. Well, as it, as it happened, she showed him some of the things he was looking for, and we supplied all the contracts to, to finance, so they had them up here, but he wanted to see our purchasing books. And we keep the requests for quotes, we keep the purchase order, we keep all the documentation. Opened the book, looked at three pages in the book, and said, "I don't need to see any more of this. You have so much documentation. This is great." Closed it. Laura came to me, and she's just all ear-to-ear smile, saying, "I passed my first audit."
Yeah.
So I thought that was great.
Congratulations.
It was a good luck story for her, and she did very well.
Huge accomplishment in procurement, sure.
It is, definitely.
And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Anything for Mr. Thurman. All right, thank you so much for that lively report. So we now have come to Citizen Comments, and again, I will take the comments that are.
Oh, Mayor Koontz? I'm sorry, I forgot one more extremely important item, and Janet made me think of it when she turned a page. We had the opportunity this week to discuss with one of our fellow utilities our energy efficiency. And in that, we have exhausted our funds, and we're waiting for more reimbursement from Bonwell, but that won't happen until October, because we're getting it into the community to keep our, our loading down, so we don't go into Tier 2 or expensive power. This other utility has more money than they will be able to use, and it's a use-it-or-lose-it opportunity. They granted us via a bilateral transfer, which we're waiting for the final report, $65,000 to infill to our program, and we've already got things lined up where we could spend that very easily between now and October. But that's an excellent boon, and it's a good way of utilities working together to share money that we pay a little bit ahead of time, and then we hopefully get back. I'm sorry, I forgot. That was very important. $65,000 is a good one to the next year.
Well done, well done.
Helps rates.
Exactly, it does, it helps rates. That's wonderful. And like I say, if, if they don't have the manpower, or the time, or the need in the community, great that we're allowed to do that transfer, so.
That's correct.
Huh, excellent, thanks. So speaking of utility things, we are at Citizen Comments, and I'll go ahead and call these up, or remind you about three minutes. Our agenda is pretty full tonight of some very potentially dry materials, so we'll keep the comments quick and lively, and move from power to water. So, Royal Johnson, comments please. Join us at the table, and let us know where you live, and we'll.
I live in Monmouth, Oregon, at 283 North Atwater. Been a resident here for 45, 46 years. Was on the council, I've been in the Budget Committee, everything else. I wanted to say thank you for the balanced budget and the thoughtful process that went into it. I want to thank Janet for the, the graphs that she put in this year that we talked about before when I was on. I think they showed quite a bit, and I, I saw that the budget people used it. I just wanted to say thanks again. I hope it stays balanced, and hope we can stay with it, okay? One of the things I, I heard at the Budget Committee, I just want to bring a quick thing about this before I get to water, is that, you know, we, people in the Budget Committee presented some other ideas other than what came from the supervisors. We have very good supervisors in town. I have nothing against that. But I thought the idea, the budget and a council meeting and a budget was to bring out ideas, thoughts that could be used better, doesn't mean exactly at the same time, but down the road, how to put them forward, and how their costs are. Now, you're elected as a watchdog for the taxpayer. The taxpayer doesn't have, know anything about, but you're the one that kind of oversees what the bids are, where the money goes, and everything else. So, I, I think that the, the conversations at the budget are more than open. I think that people should make suggestions, doesn't mean that they're going to make it, it might be for the next budget meeting, but I don't think that should be stopped. That's a very open comment that should be taken. And I kind of heard the comments that, you know, that we shouldn't talk about to supervisors, but they all put forward a budget, they all try to get what they can. Your idea is, what is most needed, where is it best needed, and how does it benefit the community? That was one of my gifts. On the other part, I have on the wells in, in Monmouth, and most of our well water comes from the other side of the river in Marion County. Three years ago, we talked about drilling a new well in Marion County. We said we could not drill a new well over there, Marion County would not let us. Marion County doesn't have anything to do with it. That's Oregon Resources Water, all water in the state of Oregon is run by Oregon Resources. So, I called and asked. Anyhow, and at the Budget Meeting, I heard now that we're going to try to get some money together to drill two more wells in Marion County for our water. Well, three years ago, we asked about drilling a new well at the time beside the one we have that has the bad casing. It would have been cheaper, we could have put it in, we wouldn't have near the problem with the water, nor with the DEQ, because we could have taken care of the contamination. Just wanted to put that out there on the deal. Also, the city of Monmouth and the city of Indipent went together on the West Field, that's on the west side of the river. We bored those holes together, the wells, brought them in. Last year, they were tested, and I don't know what happened, but the test wasn't right, and we paid for it, both the city of Monmouth and the city of Independence. Now they're going to be retested again. Why? Why do we spend money and have to redo it again if they weren't the right ones to start with? I'm trying to put this out there. Why don't we make the person that tested redo it, or find out what happened? Weren't they bonded? Were they right people? Were the right instructions given to them? You're double-moneying down, and we're trying to do the best job we can in the city. Also, that that was supposed to be connected up to the filtration plant on Fourth Street. That was part of the program for the filtration, was to take water from those West Fields. I saw nothing in the budget this year at all about any, about any income from Independence or any costs that they were going to help pay for those filters. If this is part of the deal, and then we sell water back to them, or charge them so much a cubic foot to filter the water. I'm just trying to get a handle on why we're kind of doubling back, or doubling through is what we're doing, on the water. And we've already developed these wells, why aren't we using them? Why are we putting more wells in Marion County? Big deal with Marion County is, you, you have to get the water rights, because you're using the same aqua. So, you can't just go put a well in unless you get the water rights for the aqua. We bought that water from Raymond Farms for the second well over there. Probably out of my time, but I just have some.
Twenty seconds.
Real important things I thought that were very important, that we need to look at. And, and the new filtration was very expensive, and yet the cost, some of that cost was going to be shared by Independence, but see nothing in the budget about that Independence cost share.
Five seconds.
That was after the treatment of the water, so. Is that it? My three minutes?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, I'll come back again for the rest of it.
Okay.
I would like, for one thing, I would like a written statement why we ended up double paying for this stuff, and why we're backtracking again on our costs. Thank you very much.
And we'll probably have someone contact you about that, so sort of out of our area of expertise, so we'll have someone be in touch. Thank you, Royal. Tonight, we have Donna Koontz. Donna would like to speak to us about some city planning land use, so we don't have anything on the agenda about it. We'll take your comments now, thank you.
I apologize for not being on the agenda.
No, no, that's, that's what this time is for. I'm saying you're right here at the right time.
All right. So, we wanted to make sure that the Planning Commission or someone had a copy of the letter that we sent on May 17th to Suzanne. Basically, it's a request for our property at 6685 Talmage Road. Basically, it's a request for our property at 6685 Talmage Road to possibly be considered in a land swap, in a, in a swap for the urban growth. And I guess our, our real question as a family, it's, the property is owned by the Coontz family. We're longtime Monmouth people, been here forever. Feels like, no, it doesn't feel like, but it feels really good, actually. But we're, we're curious about the, how interested the city really is in pursuing the urban growth boundary land swap. And if the city's interested, is there a plan in place to move in that direction?
Okay.
So those are, those are our questions and we hope that there's someone soon that can be able to perhaps let us know so that we can move forward in one direction or the other.
And did you want a written response on that or a phone call? Have you spoken to...
A written response would be most appropriate for us. Thank you.
I know, we are looking at urban growth boundaries. It's still up there on our list, so...
I've been to the meetings and it's been wonderful.
Yes, you have been. Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Donna. And Maggie Triplet, something from you this evening.
Maggie Triplet, Mayor Coontz and members of the council. I'm coming for you to give you a grand thank you for the urban renewal money that you granted, Petals and Vines. We are thrilled with the outcome of it and it's finally finished. Took a year, but I think we have improved Main Street in, in a way that we've had a lot of comments on it and we're very excited about it and I just wanted to extend our thanks for granting us that.
Looks great.
Yes.
Looks beautiful.
Yeah. Thank you for all the extra work you've put into it and extra money. It really is a great addition, so thank you very much, Maggie. And Nan Willis, the budget we'll let you talk about during that and you had another issue that you wanted to visit with us about, so please introduce yourself for the camera.
Good evening, council, mayor and city staff. Tonight, I do want to make some comments that I began briefly during the budget meetings. And it was directly in response, Mayor Coontz, to the insert that was sent with our utility bill. And at that point, as noted during the budget meeting, I think it's a noble effort to wait until the city council has all the estimates and is able to have them in hand, all those studies, so that they can make the best big picture decisions about infrastructure needs. When it comes to sidewalks, however, this presents two problems. One is that you know that not all those studies will be completed at the same time. So my first question would be, how many will you wait for? Three, four, five? It would be good to have some direction. Also, it was pretty clear as a member of the budget committee that there will be some incredible competing priorities against those sidewalks. If I'm counting right, water fund rate increase possible, new stormwater utility fee, parks master plan can have budget implications, the urban growth boundary, the street fund, continued power and light increases, city hall, oh, and then sidewalks. Have I missed any? Did I get the list? It's a lot.
That's kind of what we've been kind of talking about.
More power to you. This is all to say, it could take a very, very long time to change the city code around sidewalks. There is a solution, I think, in the meantime, that I would like you to consider, and that is to rescind the code. I heard council candidates, including our new mayor, say, to do this very thing when asked directly at a Western Oregon University candidate forum held before the election. The council could choose to simply not enforce the sidewalk code, but this kind of sends a government is capricious message and I don't think that's cool. I'm just wondering what there is to gain by keeping the code, given what you know now about the difficulties that it presents. Rescinding the code would send a clear message of the intent to make some change to the code in the future and perhaps encourage a shorter timeline for this to happen as well. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Burley Shaki, why don't you come on up and introduce yourself to us? Also has three minutes to comment about sidewalks.
Well, thank you for listening to me. I also have some concerns about the sidewalks and how they're going to be funded if there's repairs to be made. We all know that there are quite a few sidewalks that do need repaired. My concern is, is how are we going to pay for it? Three years ago, four years ago, we were remodeling our house over here on Monmouth Avenue. You can see the place from just about here. We went ahead and replaced the sidewalks in front of our house because, you know, it's a prob, it was a problem. We had tripping hazards, just like a lot of other homeowners have tripping hazards. So we, we spent a substantial amount of money on making those repairs. I'm not too interested at this point in paying for other people's sidewalks, basically. You know, if it's in front of their house, just like on a new construction over in, say, Edwards Edition around down here. When you build a house, you know, you, you put those sidewalks in and you pay for them. You know, the people that buy the home, contractor, he's putting those in, but the homeowner pays for it. I realize in the older neighborhoods, you have a lot of sidewalks that are in disrepair. I, I think, well, I'm not sure how you're going to come up with the money for that, to tell you the truth. My thought is that if it's in front of the, the person who overhaunts that home should pay for it. Basically, that's all I have. I just want to voice my concern is I don't want to have to pay for somebody else since I've already paid for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. And those are all the comments we have that are not related to the budget, so we will take additional comments, George, at the budget hearing.
Cool. Sure. No problem.
Well, if it's directly related to the budget, we should wait till the budget hearing. Yep. So we'll, we will wait. When we get there, we will certainly do that. All right. Thank you very much, everyone, for those comments. We appreciate them. We will get to our business agenda tonight, which consists of a lot of items. Again, each piece of this, we're sort of dealing with this very end of this year for this budget and then starting the process of appropriating funds so that they can be planned to be spent in July for next year. So we're going to just turn the rest of the night almost over to Janet Shinard, our wonderful finance director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilors. So yes, we will stay in 1819, fiscal 1819 for a little bit before we move to 1920. And in that regard, as we have done other years and with the blessing of the auditors because we have not gone over our appropriations as yet, but there are several categories where we, where we are tight and these are all ones that you are probably aware of from my quarterly reports that we might need to do, as well as from some of the other department heads have brought forward concerns about some areas that have gone over or that appear to be going over. And so we will use, or we propose to use some contingency transfers or other category transfers that haven't been used in order to be able to meet budget law and not go over those appropriations. So I won't read through all of them, but I did just want to highlight, in the general fund, there are three areas. One is for parks and recreation and another for management and finance, which are both two items that in previous council meetings, the council was in favor of moving forward with use of contingencies for a increased park landscape contract and to cover the city hall space consultant, an increment for. We were able to absorb most of that and we may still be able to absorb that. I'm working hard to keep costs down so that we don't have to use these appropriations, but in order to be strictly legal, I'd like to have these appropriations so that I don't go over. And then the police department has some higher than anticipated vehicle maintenance costs that with everything else being equal, may cause them to be slightly over budgeted. So we'd like to just move 10,000 in contingencies for that. In the water fund, I've been talking every quarter about the higher personnel costs that are primarily related to some capital project work as well. There were some unforeseen or unbudgeted, I will say, retirement cash outs that led to us potentially being over in that fund. Again, we, we hope to absorb that, but 75,000 is the cushion that we're seeking for that. In the gas fund, we actually anticipated higher fuel costs, but did not anticipate the volume of fuel usage that we've used. And I think it's a function of all of the development that's been going on, as well as a, a new building and moving people back and forth. And so we're, we haven't yet done any capital outlay, so we're going to just move that over from that category. This will not be one I have to do in a future year because in 1920, we're going to adopt it at the public works department level, so I don't have to move between categories and that'll give us a little more flexibility. And the building fund, as I've again made you aware with all of the development, we have a, a wonderful problem. We've had to hire more time from our temporary inspectors and also our pass through account of state surcharges that we pay. We have revenues to cover them. I could have done this as a supplemental budget. I opted to keep it clean and simple by using contingencies since we have a fairly good reserve balance. Again, you can opt otherwise, but that's what I'm recommending. And then lastly, in the tourism fund, Suzanne Duffner, our wonderful community development director, does so much in a day, in a week, in a year. I cannot even believe. And she has managed to bite off more than I can chew. So I'm hoping that, that we don't need this again, but she and I talked about it and this will give us, the $5,000 would give us just enough scope if some of the costs come in that I need to book for this fiscal year. If some of those payments come in early, then I will have the $5,000. And again, we have a reserve, we have a fund balance there that doesn't, this doesn't impact greatly at all. So with that, I would take questions on any of these transfers that are being recommended.
Counselor Carey.
Would you run through that gas fund?
Sure.
Again, I, I was making notes elsewhere and I didn't get all of that.
So, so for the fuel fund, as you know, it's, it's our inter-fund. We use, it, it's a revolving fund, if you will. We use it for our internal vehicles and we also sell gas to Minnet and to the Pocany Fire District. We had established fuel pricing that actually ended up being a little higher than what we had in the first half of the year. The second half of the year somewhat made up for that and then we had more volume of use of fuel because of the development and public works and power and light and building driving a lot, basically, to, to cover the ground. I believe that that's the reason for the increased volume. And so, so we are just, basically, we used more gas and so paid for more gas than we thought we were going to use. We didn't use the capital outlay, so I'm proposing using those savings to cover that higher cost.
What was targeted in that capital outlay? I don't recall.
Yeah, we, in that capital outlay was, we're, we're looking at, and we will probably do that in 1920, we've budgeted it again, some fuel tank software that is at its end of life. They, we have our, the fuel tanks that are on the public works property is, are, basically the software is, is dying and we don't have the ability to go to Windows 10 and all of those kinds of things. So, so that is something that is probably going to be in that range.
You know, it's, it's, I, I think this is appropriate, it needs be, but, but I, it's, I mean, I'm troubled by the fact that we're using sort of operating, well, we have capital outlay funds for operating expenses.
Understood. We don't, we don't, we don't hold a contingency in this fund. We don't typically budget for a contingency in this fund because it's a revolving fund. And so, you know, I, I hear what you're saying and that's not our typical modus operandi. We try to obviously budget as close as we can, but because it's a revolving fund, it is a little more challenging to...
More moving parts in this one.
Right.
It's harder than anything. Okay. That, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
If our partners used more and then we would have more revenue to offset, but if we're using more ourselves internally, we don't have as much flexibility.
And we do, and we do recoup the costs from all of the, all of the users. So it's not like we're going into deficit. It's just, you know...
For their use.
Right. But again, if you know, if it's, if, if a particular fund is using more of the, of, using more gas, they're spending more money on gas and so that's coming out of their fund. So, you know, it is a concern. We don't want to be spending willy nilly and we do try very hard to do fuel conservation.
Well, the ca, the capital outlay versus operational is, is the issue.
Yes, understood.
I understand, in this instance.
Yes.
Other questions regarding these transfers? And again, legally, doing this legally because we, we can only, they can only spend what we allow and appropriate and in this case, that's what contingencies are for. So we have those available in these, most cases, except as you point out, John. If there are no other questions, we would adopt a resolution and take a roll call vote on resolution number 1883 and I will entertain a proposed motion.
I'll move adoption of resolution 1883, a resolution approving appropriation transfers for fiscal year 1819 and directing the finance director to make appropriate entries to, to record the appropriate transfers in the fiscal year 1819 city budget documents and financial system.
And it has been moved by Counselor Carey and second and by Counselor Silbernagle to adopt resolution 1883 for that purpose. And Phyllis, roll call, please.
Counselor Lopez.
Aye.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Belts.
Aye.
Counselor Sharma.
Yes.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
All right. Resolution 1883 has been approved and so you can carry on with those, but you have more.
Well, I have another, another small one and this is my apologies to all of you. The auditors, one little thing that they caught was that for that $600 transfer, we did back, I think in January, yes, using a template and it was not caught by any of my erstwhile proofers or by me. We left in the word SDC fund instead of sewer fund. And from a budget law perspective, although normally this would be administrative correction to, you know, if you have a typo because it's a fund...
A Scrivener's error.
Right. It is a, a fund name and so the auditors felt that we did need to correct it. So in that regard, it's simply changing. If you, if you look at your resolution, instead of saying, "We are moving $600 from the sewer fund to the sewer SDC fund," we are actually moving it to the sewer fund as intended by you and by me. And one other thing I will add to that is I did, while the auditors were here, question our past practice of booking, paying agent fees as a debt service expenditure, which is not something I had been familiar with, but is something that we had traditionally done in Monmouth for many, many years. And they were absolutely fine with me in the future, doing it as a cost, as a professional services cost in the operating budget, which would save us the, the pain and anguish of moving $600 around to, to, in case of increases at the last minute by banks further paying agent fees. And so, and also allowing us to budget a little bit more strategically for the debt service, which is, we know what that is in advance. So I, I don't anticipate, I guess what I'm saying is bringing you such an amendment or a transfer again. And so with your blessing, I will make this resolution and do it to the sewer fund instead of the sewer SDC.
Okay. So this would actually be resolution number 1884 to approve the transfer, but also to rescind resolution 1879 that we passed earlier this year. And so I'll take any questions for Janet and seeing none, entertain a motion.
I move adoption of resolution 1884 and rescinding resolution 1879, a resolution approving appropriation... approving appropriations and transfers of contingencies for the fiscal year 1819, and directing the finance director to make appropriate entries to record these appropriations in the fiscal year 1819 city budget documents and financial system.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution 1884. And a roll call, please. Phyllis.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Belz.
Aye.
Counselor Lopez.
Aye.
Counselor Sharmar.
Yes.
All right. And that has been approved. Go forth and enter and correct. And thanks for finding out about that future, too. That'll help for, obviously, for future budget. So now we move into the future year. So now we are looking at our 1920 work, the work of the Fine Budget Committee, as we heard. And we have several issues before us on that. So we will start off with our resolution on the use of state revenue sharing. And as mentioned by our esteemed counsel, we do hold a public hearing on that. So.
Want me to present the staff report first?
If you will do that.
So that the public has more of an idea what their.
Right. If anyone has comments, then we will hold the hearing.
So the state requires us, Oregon requires us to formally adopt and accept revenue-sharing dollars in respect of non-designated monies that they will share with us from liquor, primarily from liquor and cigarette taxes, as well as highway taxes. We have the option of accepting them and using them as a non-designated revenue, either in the general fund or the street fund as appropriate. And then we have the option of not taking them so that the state can use them. We also have the option of reducing our property tax levy to the extent of the amounts of the revenue sharing if we had ample funds and wanted to do it that way as a, as a mechanism for the, that resource. The staff is recommending, obviously, since we do not have ample funds and have already budgeted these funds into our budget, that we accept these dollars. If not, we, if we do not accept them, we would have to find areas to cut or another revenue source. So with that, I would go for a public hearing.
And again, a little background, we did hold a hearing during our actual budget process. The Budget Committee had the same hearing, and they recommended that we accept the revenue sharing. But we will open the public hearing on the resolution on the use of state revenue sharing. I didn't notice any comments here about this. Anyone here to comment? Or against? Thank you, George. Comments from the peanut gallery? Not welcome. And seeing no public comments, then I will close the public portion of the hearing, and I will entertain questions from counsel. And seeing none, entertain a motion. This would be resolution 1885 to declare our election to receive the state's shared revenue.
I move approval of resolution 1885, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Lopez, seconded by Counselor Belz. And roll call, please, Ms. Bowman.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Belz.
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Sharmar.
Yes.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Lopez.
Aye.
And that is approved. Thank you very much. And yay. So now we will go ahead and talk about the regular public hearing on our 2019-20 budget. Again, members of the Budget Committee approved this budget, recommended we approve this budget, adopt this budget. So go ahead, and we'll give the staff report. We do have a couple of folks who had indicated wish to speak about the budget during the hearing. So we'll hear your comments first, Janet.
So in the staff report about the fiscal 1920 budget, I just highlighted some of the elements that are a little different with the budget from, from the proposed budget that, that was originally issued to you. As you will recall, counsel, that we added, the Budget Committee added $130,991 in administrative corrections, as well as a carryover. So with no net effect to the bottom line, but, but having an impact on what the total appropriated and unappropriated dollars were. And that brought us to a total budget of $36,509,657. Encompassed in that $36 million budget, I wanted to highlight sort of three major items for your consideration. One, which we'll talk about a little later as well, is that for non-represented staff, a COLA or a cost of living allowance was incorporated of 2.27% as well as COLAs for each of the union based on their collective bargaining agreements or an anticipated possibility for a negotiation that was contemplated as being proffered. So next, I wanted to again highlight that there were no utility rate increases planned for this fiscal year. In lieu of that, to, to balance the water fund budget, we are looking at doing a $500,000 inter-fund loan from the sewer fund with repayment terms, appropriate repayment terms, so that it is an investment for the sewer fund and they are kept whole. And so the last item I wanted to highlight was that we only added one new position, and that was in the building fund. The combination residential building inspector is estimated to cost approximately $101,000 for salary benefits and associated costs for setup. That will not be $101,000 every year, but just so that you're aware of that. Those are the main items. And of course, we are levying ad valorem taxes of $230,770. That is what we propose in order to pay for our general obligation bonds for the police station. And then lastly, we had a capital improvement plan that is in the order of four and a half, five million dollars that is planned for this year. But again, a number of those items in there are placeholders, and so I would put that forward under consideration.
All right. Thank you. I will go ahead and open the public hearing on the 1920 City of Monmouth budget. George, did you have comments for us? Please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm George Jeffrey, 290 Weinecker. Basically, I just wanted to reiterate what I said about three weeks ago. I'd like to see you guys pass the budget as we forward it to you. I think with all the time and effort that was put into it, you have a very good document that covers everything we really need. Secondly, if you decide to change something, I would like to see in writing, and it could be on the website, the tangible evidence you use to make these changes. Not just, oh, I thought it'd be a good idea, but how it would affect us financially and the good financially. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And so any other public comment regarding the budget as presented? Nan?
Nan Willis, 631 Martin Way. It can't be said enough how I appreciate the improvements made on the budget process this year. The document itself is mentioned, the continued detail with it, meeting earlier, and I know that was a push for department heads, the agendas themselves, presentations, especially those who made time to write a summary for us. And the budget initiative form was also welcomed. Other improvement ideas that I would have the council consider, I believe that rationale is needed when, to show us how we go from a list like this presented in January of possible staff increases to recommending support for only two departments on this list. So as Mr. Jeffries said, it would be helpful to have criteria used to narrow that recommendation and the data used to drive that decision in addition to the experiential data. I believe that one department was able to leverage staff as a cost savings. This strategy should be considered across the board for all departments. How this happened was almost magical and glossed over and needs more in-depth explanation in the future, I think. Continued lack of a big-picture discussion around the capital improvements program and the weight of all the requests taken together, I think would be helpful. I understand many are placeholders, but there's a sense that it doesn't require discussion because it can only be spent on things. But over two and a half million will come from the general fund, not SDCs, grants, or donations. Anyone would like the latest, greatest desired thing or the thing to make life easier. But I believe, and this has been said by others, I'd like to repeat, that the long-term savings or efficiency or value added needs to be really clarified. And value added can be customer service. Two and a half million is a lot of money diverted from departmental support or even debt reduction. Lastly, two considerations. The Budget Committee, I read things that Janet gives me, budgeting basics, thank you, Janet. The Budget Committee can revise the proposed budget to reflect changes it wants to make in the local government's fiscal policy, provided that the revisions result in a balanced budget. Given this, committee members should be made to feel that suggestions for adjustments to the budget are okay to put on the table for discussion without this becoming a statement about any lack of trust in the expertise of city staff. Clearly, Monmouth has an exceptional city staff. Whenever budget issues are on the council agenda, Janet, the budget chair and Budget Committee member, should be present at that meeting.
Thirty seconds.
This would encourage the city staff to work more closely with the Budget Committee throughout the year and help to educate this third-party group on the complexity of city finances and the need to tread thoughtfully when changing an approved budget. Thank you for your three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Willis. Thank you for your fine work as chairman of the Budget Committee as well. We definitely appreciate the time and effort that goes into that. So thank you very much. Any other comments? I'll declare the public hearing portion closed, and time for council questions. Counselor Lopez.
I have a question regarding the position of the combination residential building inspector. And this is just to double-check my, my notes during the, during the Budget Committee. It, from my notes, I recall that it is anticipated that this will be a largely revenue or cost-neutral position, as it would also increase our capacity to, to, to take these applications. And this would not just add $100,000 to our baseline budget.
So that is probably a reasonable statement in some regards. So essentially, we have more development at the moment than we can manage. And so if we have more bodies on the ground, we can bring in the revenue faster. At some point, as was raised in Budget Committee, if that, if the development stops, the revenue stops, and the $100,000 would continue unless we make a different decision. So I don't know that it's fair to say revenue neutral, but certainly right now it is very much needed in order to stay compliant with what the state needs us to do for development purposes and the applications that we're getting in.
Excellent. Thank you for the clarity. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, we do have a resolution that was sent out, should be in front of you, and that is our resolution adopting the budget. We do that. We also have to make the appropriations, allowing everyone to spend the money budgeted, levy the ad valorem taxes, which are the property taxes that we use to pay our bills and pay down our debt service, and then also adapting, adopting the capital improvement plan. This would be resolution number 1886, and I would entertain a motion.
I move approval of resolution number 1886, a resolution adopting the budget, making appropriations, levying ad valorem taxes, and adopting the capital improvements plan for the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Thank you, Counselor Lopez, and a second.
Second.
And it has been moved and seconded. And again, we will do a roll call on this. Please, Phyllis.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Sharmar.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Belz.
Yes.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. So we now, we now have things in place to spend for next year. And again, amazing work by the Budget Committee, thorough questions, and thanks so much to Janet for making that process as painless as possible. We do have a few more things to manage here, and again, resolutions. One of those is that compensation plan for non-represented employees. We have several, many of our employees are in bargaining, collective bargaining units, and those contracts are negotiated by the city manager. We, however, we have some non-represented employees. They are not represented by unions, and it is up to us to sort of establish those rates at this point. And we have a report here on that. So Janet, if you want to share how these numbers were arrived at and what we're looking at.
Indeed. And in fact, I'd like to emphasize the fact that roughly half of the employees at the city are non-represented. It's not, it's not a similar situation to other cities where it is strictly management that are non-represented. It is, it is a lot of our administrative staff, our finance staff, our library staff, all are non-represented, whereas other cities do have unions sometimes for those. So this is a, is a, is half of the population that we're talking about. And in that regard, as you know, we have had a COLA mechanism for many years. That was a fairly stable mechanism, and we used it based on council direction, but then it went away. And so when we met at the kickoff Budget Committee meeting earlier this year, there was direction sought and not a lot of direction given, but some interest in looking at a CPIU instead of a CPIW benchmark because the CPIU, which is the urban measure.
Consumers.
Yes, urban consumer measure, has a bigger base that is part of the sampling. And so it tends, again, to make it a little bit more stable than the CPIW, which can have much higher highs and much lower lows. So that is one element that we took into consideration. And then on the other side, we'd like to have something that is at least relatively reasonable for a smaller city than Portland and a smaller city than Seattle, obviously. And we would like something that is representative of more of a West Coast type of environment. And fortunately, there is one, which is the Western Region Small City Measure, which it comes in both a CPIU and a CPIW flavor. So we opted for the CPIU Western Region Index, and that turned out to be very much a middle-of-the-road index through the next several months as we looked at it. Right now, it's actually, you know, based on the selection of the February statistic, which again, that's a fairly normal benchmark with other cities and other agencies to use as the February one versus we used to use this last six months of the year, end of December. February gets us a little closer to where we are in July theoretically, as far as being more realistic with what the cost of living is, which is the whole point of the exercise. And so the February benchmark ends up actually being probably the low point this calendar year for this particular statistic. It was a little higher before February and a little higher after February. It is also a little lower than what the rest of the, the union represented staff are expected to get. So with that, it is still 2.27%. It is a reasonable, and I think a justifiable, level that count, that staff recommends. But with that, I would leave it open for your questions and discussion.
And I will entertain such questions and discussions. Counselor Carey.
What's the COLA for the Monmouth Police Association?
2.75%.
And what about the IBW?
It's under negotiation at the moment.
Prior to, under the old contract, what was it?
Two and a half for, I don't recall off the top of my head, but I believe it was two, oh, actually, I might have the, I might have the data here. But it was there, the, the, I believe that the public works component was 1.75 and that the.
2.25.
2.25 for power and light.
The reason I ask is, and I was not at the kickoff budget meeting, but it's, we've always struggled with these, you know, these indexes that are statistically derived from a variety of data points. Some relate to us and some don't. But we do have two negotiated rates, and we're all, we aren't, but all of this, we're dealing with Monmouth employees, city of Monmouth employees. You know, I'm, I'm going to be a yes on this one because, because we need to get it moving. But as we consider this in the future, I, I would like us to give some consideration. There may be reasons against it, but I would like to see a averaging of what we pay the police union and what we pay the IBW. Those are negotiated. There's people involved with that. The data that informs those people is derived, but it is distilled a bit, it would seem. And, you know, I, I think a year ago, we had, you know, the non-reps, because of the anomaly and the rate we used was 3.6, and employees of the same organization were getting, you know, 2.5 or 2.75. And while there's rationale on both sides, you know, I understand why that was done. I just wonder if that might be a, a, something that we could consider. So, everybody's sort of at least in the same pen.
Look at some other ways of doing that, and bring that back either to us or likely to the Budget Committee in January again, as we look for how to do this. Thank you for that comment. Any other...
This would probably be, it's a management decision.
Right, right.
But it might be...
Guidance.
Guidance from the council initially.
As you say, if you sort of know how each of those is stacked, then it's a little bit easier to understand. We have some clear competitiveness going on with represented employees, because they are bargaining multiple contracts with folks around the area, and a little bit different for us potentially. So, okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments about the resolution adopting the compensation plan for non-represented employees? That would be, again, spending money, so we get to do a roll call Resolution Number 1887. I will entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 1887, a resolution adopting an increase in the compensation levels for non-represented city employees in the amount of 2.27% over the compensation level for that, for the same employee group during the fiscal year 2018 and 2019.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Lopez. Moved and seconded to adopt the resolution, and a roll call, please, Phyllis.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Sharmar.
Yes.
Counselor Belz.
Aye.
Counselor Lopez.
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
All right, and we have adopted that. We have a couple more folks before we get into our Planning Commission joint meeting. And so, we now review our investment policies. So, these are some sort of regular reviews we do of policies regarding monetary and fiscal policy for the city. And so, Janet?
Thank you. So, for the investment policy, we do have to review it annually. That is a requirement for, for a city government. And so, we don't have, I do not have any major substantive changes this year. I have more, I would call them administrative changes. The only things that I would draw to your attention are on page four of the policy, where I made it a little clearer what, what we do have the ability to invest in, because it was, it simply showed two levels of diversification. And right now, we, we do have the ability to do U.S. Treasury obligations and U.S. Agency Securities, or government-sponsored enterprise agencies. We haven't done those in a while. As you know, right now, we are still in the local government investment pool, which, we got a Christmas present, it was actually Christmas Eve, we got 2.75%, is what it went up to, and it stayed there. I don't anticipate that it will stay there forever, and I don't anticipate it will go up much higher. But for now, until it starts to look like it is not as robust or, or there is a risk assessment, which I do try to do every month when I'm going over our investments that would suggest that we start moving out of it, then we will look at some of these other opportunities. They will probably not be as high-yielding initially, but if we can put them out a little bit further, in theory, they will hold their value through that period. So, that was the one change I wanted to make. And then, I also wanted to just update, under the performance evaluation, what we're already doing in our quarterly reports. As you know, I've added, because we are fully invested in the LGIP, comparing it to the LGIP does not seem that comparative. So, I thought I would add the 30-day Treasury as well as the two-year Treasury notes to give you an idea of just how well the LGIP is performing. And so, I added in that information so that you know that we are continuing to plan to have some kind of benchmark like that. Otherwise, like I said, there is a few small typos and grammatical errors that I corrected, but it stands as it is. At some juncture, I would like to explore if, again, if rates in the LGIP drop and long-term rates if the yield curve steepens, basically, going out a little further than 18 months. But at that time, I would have to take it to the Oregon's Short-Term Funding Board to get approval, and with your approval, I would do that. But that will be a future time period.
Got that, everybody? This is Darren's life every day, and Cece's life every day. So, again, a very safe investment. That's all we've got now. This offers a little bit of opportunity, but also that new benchmark for her, for Janet to use to compare to us, and numbers that are readily available. She doesn't have to do a lot of work each month to get the Treasury rates, the 30-day or the two-year Treasury rates. Those are pretty available. So, that seems like a good investment. Checking Oregon, which the local government investment pool is Oregon local government, school districts and cities and counties and fire boards and people like that, all pooling our money together, and the Oregon State Treasurer investing that for us. Pretty, pretty stable and reasonable. Nothing fancy there. And make that money available. Well, it used to be a phone call. You used to have to call in to transfer your money from your pool to your own checking account. Now, it's an online system, but very, very good way to stash our money away on a short-term basis. So, are there any questions about that? Yes.
First, thank you very much for, for all the work that you do to, to safeguard our investments and shepherd those in the right direction. For someone who does not spend their whole day doing this and knows just enough, just enough to be dangerous, I have a question regarding the performance evaluation section. The new verbiage seems to leave the comparing indicators, the comparable indicators, slightly open. It says, "as well as other comparable market indicators, such as the yields on 30-day and two-year Treasury notes." Those two seem to be, be very clear market indicators that we would want to compare this to. But for the, you know, in the interest of consistency over the, over time, is there any reason that we've elected in this verbiage to keep this open-ended, as far as what could be added and not added, as opposed to specifically defining it?
Well, if, things change. I don't know, as you say, if you're not familiar with the markets. For the best part of my financial life, LIBOR has been a variable rate benchmark forever, and it's going away. And so, even with Treasury notes, the 30-year, at one point, they took it away, then they brought it back. And, and so, so I guess, from the standpoint of, I think these are two very good ones that I would continue to use, absent anything better. And I would bring that to you before I took either of them away. If you would like me to be more clear and say, "These are the ones I will use, and I won't use anything else until I tell you," I could do that. But this, I, I, the intent is that I would continue to use these until they were not a good benchmark, and then I would proffer something else.
I appreciate the clarity, and I, I don't think I, I personally need, need anything else there. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And again, because this is our council policy, it requires Resolution Number 1888 to re-adopt the policy with the changes submitted. And I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of Resolution 1888, which adopts the city of Monmouth investment policy as modified.
Second. And adopts or re-adopts? Do we need a clarification on the wording?
Re-adopt, I think.
Re-adopt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because the proposed motion actually wasn't written in here, so we're stumbling here.
Right, and I see that now.
Was it at the bottom of the staff report?
It is at the bottom.
But it does say adopts.
It does, yeah.
In the suggested motion.
As modified. I wasn't sure if that, that's how we've been doing it.
It says, "Re-adopt" on the resolution.
Oh, interesting. Okay, then you should have some consistency.
So, Darren, would you change your motion?
Uh, re-adopt would be great.
Thank you. And Roxanne, will you accept that as a second? Phyllis, do you have the corrected motion?
It's the title.
Very good. And this will be a roll call vote?
Counselor Lopez.
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Belz.
Aye.
Counselor Sharmar.
Yes.
And that is approved, and we will move to our final action item of our, of our regular meeting tonight. And again, another one of these policies that we have that it's good practice or a requirement to review as part of our fiscal healths. Janet?
Exactly. And so, it is not necessarily a requirement that we renew the fiscal policy every year, however, it is a best practice to review it. And every time I review it, I find some things that I would like to change, and so I have brought them to you. Again, not that many substantive items, but at least one thing that I have raised during our quarterly sessions because of something that the auditors brought to our attention, which is that we cannot sit on our street fund reserves to the extent that we have been in the past. And as such, I'm recommending that we move to, as I, again, as I have, hopefully, you've heard me say, I'd like to change it to 15% requirement instead of the 25% that it has been carried at over the past many years. The general fund, which is obviously a much bigger fund, is, is healthy with a 15% reserve. I did do an analysis of the street fund, and a 15% reserve is, does meet what I would call a best-practice standard of meeting a three-month payroll, and, and in fact, more, double the amount needed for a three-month payroll based on our current staffing. So, it is, 15% does seem reasonable and prudent. However, it will leave us, you know, a little closer to the bone for big projects, which is one of the reasons we went to 25% low those many years ago. So, this is something, though, that, again, I feel like the auditors are pushing us in this direction, because gas taxes, which are the lion's share of what are, make up the reserves, need to be spent. That is why the citizens are contributing them. So, that is, that is the rationale for that in particular item. And then, this is not a change. This is simply fulfilling what I promised in last year's changes, which is I've provided to you a, an annual risk management report, your first annual risk management report, is very simple and directed as, as I structured it in the policy. And so, I would welcome your feedback either tonight or at another time with what are the things you might like to see in it. But this is somewhat of a template approach that CIS recommends, our city-county insurance services, as far as hitting the key aspects of what the risks are and how we're mitigating them, or what we plan to do to mitigate them. And so, you'll see that in the risk management report, I outlined basically what our claims experience has been this year. On a relative basis, I understand it to be pretty good. We, you know, we have, as every city has, we have our police officers getting in a, you know, a few fender benders, not just the police. You know, we have people out on the roads and fender benders happen, so we have a few physical damage and auto liability claims. We have just the one general liability claim this year, which was a sewer pipe issue that got broken at the College Inn Hotel, and so dug into, basically, by the contractor. And so, we've been working on that. I see all of these claims come through and work very closely with our insurance agent of record, as well as CIS, to handle them promptly, and also trying to mitigate our costs as we, as we look at them and see who else might be able to pay for them rather than us. But we do have those premiums that we pay to cover those activities. I would say that, you know, obviously, on an ongoing basis, we, we do review annually. I'm in the renewal process right now. One of my many hats is to assist with looking at, with our insurance agent of record, our adequacy of our insurance coverage and our deductible levels. And so, that is obviously something that helps us look ahead and see what kind of issues might be coming. One of the areas that I have identified as being, you know, something that we are seeing, I had a very interesting email just today from Scott McClure, so it said, asking for a deposit slip that he couldn't find. And, and so, we know that there are people out there doing all kinds of interesting hacking and phishing. And so, moving on to how we're addressing those, I will say, I'd like to highlight in that list of things that you've probably already read, our previous insurance agent of record, Hanson Insurance, was good enough to put together, as part of just their service to us, nothing extra, a study with one of their subcontractors to, to give, that's called AtBay Security. They did a backend external hacker security vulnerability test, and we got a very good report card, thanks, I think, a large part to the contract that we hold with Pope County IT, who, who helps us with our firewall, helps us with all of our security backend hygiene, as they call it, cyber hygiene. And so, I was pleased to see that we did get a good ranking, but nevertheless, I think we're at a point where $50,000 does nothing as far as coverage goes, and we really need to be looking at the next level up, which is $2 million in coverage. And so, again, I'll be working, and hopefully, the premiums will not be, will be absorbed within what we've budgeted. But I, I do think that we need to get to that coverage level. And then, lastly, I'd like to highlight, this is just a subset of all of the trainings that our staff does to try and keep a safe working environment for our employees and for the public. We, you know, we do this in protection of, of citizens as well, as ourselves. And so, there is everything, especially, you know, our utility folks are doing a lot of very dangerous things every, every living moment. So, I applaud the fact that these trainings have been going on, you know, even before we were reporting on them. So, with that, I'd welcome any questions you have, either on the fiscal policy or on the risk management report.
Yes, Chris?
I'm, I'm very happy to see that, that we've scored so well regarding our, regarding our cybersecurity. That's, that's a growing, a growing issue in, in this day and age, and has been brought up previously here at the council level. Regarding this, this test that, that we scored the 86% on.
Yes.
Was one of the metrics in that test, testing these phishing attempts that you mentioned, that we, we experience on a near-daily basis, it seems?
So, they did do, they did look at our email vulnerability, and they found several, they, I can't remember the term. I should have brought the report with me. But they found several email, I guess you'd call them fake emails that, that had penetrated. But, again, because of the firewall and because of our spam fills... again, because of the firewall and because of our spam filters and such, they said that actually we were doing a relatively good job of managing them. And again, I know that the Pope County IT staff are constantly reviewing that. They're constantly approaching me for more money for more software to, to mitigate some of the challenges that they're facing. And so I think that they, they looked primarily, though, from the external element as opposed to from the internal side. And that's something we would have to pay for if we wanted to do more, more in-depth testing. But we just, we haven't gotten to that stage yet.
As you, as a follow-up here, as you, you highlighted our, you know, vulnerability in this area as far as increasing the, the cyber insurance coverage. Do we currently have any plans to do any, any staff training or additional staff education regarding best policies?
As a matter of fact.
All right.
One of the things, yes. So, so I don't know that it has been formally communicated to staff, but one of the things that came out of our conference this year that Scott and I attend annually with the city county insurance services, that, that is part of our insurance coverage. So it's not even extra money, which is nice. We get a lot of very good information from CIS and they have introduced a best practice cyber policy template, or they're about to. I don't think it's actually been, it's actually out there. But part of that includes the training that, you know, what, what are your plans for training? What are, what are you doing for training now? What are you planning to do for training? And so, so I would say yes, because I'm planning to implement that policy hopefully in the next several months when the template is out there and blessed, which I don't believe it is yet. You haven't seen it? Okay, good.
CIS.
Yes. So in any event, yes, the answer is that we will be doing some cyber training for sure.
Thank you. Thank you for the, the color there. I do have one, one other, I guess, this is more of a feedback on the, on the report. The different, the different segments, the auto liability, physical damage, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
We have those broken out. And then there's a long list of, you know, different trainings and different, different actions that have been taken. Having those items more clearly, if it's possible, attached to, attached to some of these claims. In, as an example, if there's something that, that goes on with a claim that, you know, has corrective action on our part, it'd be interesting to, or valuable to see what that correction, corrective action did. And I don't need it on a claim basis, but on a category basis would be very helpful to see what we're, what we're really doing as far as an active measure in response to the claims.
Right. Well, and I guess probably I would characterize these trainings as being more proactive than reactive. So the nature of the claims, you know, we do safe driving training. Do we, do we make them go back because they got in a fender bender? Not necessarily. You know, department heads make their own judgments about the situations that arise, I think. I don't know whether you would speak to it.
Many of them are annual or biannual required by law.
Yeah.
So, so it's a rotating cycle.
And they might also address both worker safety as well as a liability issue or a property issue, right? So if we are, you know, if one of our people is on a pole top and has to be rescued and if he didn't, we didn't do that properly, not only would we have an employee injury, but we might fall through somebody's roof or something, so.
But I do think that that's worth, you know, as, as in next year, when I'm doing the report or, you know, when, or if the agent of record is doing it, I am happy to say, you know, if we encounter a certain situation and I know there's been a, an actual reaction to it for increased training, then I will, I'll state that.
Or if we see a spike in an area, it'd be nice to know if that led to any particular changes.
Action.
Because looking at these tables as it stands, you know, you can look at, at different spikes historically, but it doesn't, doesn't offer any, any insight into really where we are or where, what we've done. To, to, to the points previously stated, it would also be helpful to see the areas that are mandated by law and the areas that we're truly going above and beyond and having that broken out.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have questions from Counselor Carey and then Counselor Schinkel.
It seems that one of our major, well, I shouldn't say ours, but a major exposure for any government entity or, or workplace situation deals with workplace harassment, sexual harassment. We have a lot of job-specific trainings here. I'm, I'm assuming that we have some of that, that sexual harassment and sexual abuse.
So I couldn't agree with you more, Counselor Carey. We do not have an HR manager and it is, well, you know, city manager McClure wears that hat as do the department heads. We have not done, in the two years I've been here, a lot of those trainings. I know that, I believe that the police department does some of those trainings, but we haven't done an all-staff training of that nature. And it's been on my list. You know, it is one of those things that I think I agree is very critical. And it, it would not be on this list that, that I'm aware of from, from an all-staff perspective.
Well, that, that, you know, I would hope that all other councils would join me in suggesting that that be addressed immediately and planned for at least immediately. Doesn't require a, a human resource director to schedule that sort of training. There's lots of that available.
Right.
And, and lots of sources that could get people connected to it. And I would submit that that is a very high exposure. And one of the defenses against that sort of thing is the training that's been provided.
Correct.
And, and without training provided, we're exposed.
I agree.
I will state that through Northwest Public Power Association, they do have many webinar or, or computer-based training that we've taken advantage of.
Sure.
We don't call it sexual harassment training. It's harassment prevention training. But we do, and we can easily make that available to the rest of the city.
And I guess, yeah. And I would say, you know, individual staff members have also have access to CIS trainings and, and have asked for those trainings and, and have been granted those trainings. We just haven't done a comprehensive all-city training. And so that's a fair comment, certainly.
I'm sure individuals are, are looking for those things, but it needs to be an institutional commitment.
We have done it once since I've been here.
Okay.
The whole, whole crew.
Yeah.
Yep. And we have the LPGI. We have the Government Presale Institute with resources. And I'll tell you, your new agent of record, actually, they do onsite training themselves. We've had several trainings directly from our broker now instead of our insurance carrier. So it's net, since the city now shares one with the school district, they're really helpful with those things. And then counsel, was, was that all you had?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, John. And Byron?
Counselor Carey was reading my mind. What, what the training can also do, it can also mitigate damages once something comes up. And if something does happen, then, you know, court looks at it and says, okay, you've taken some steps here, so you're not as liable perhaps as, as you might be, maybe not taking those kinds of steps. So just another advocate for, for that type of stuff, another reason to, to do that. So, but on that note, looking at, you know, our, our exposure here, do we have EPLI insurance, employment practices insurance, separate from the CIP stuff or?
So you mean bonded insured?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Bonded? No.
So we're not, we're not insured for employment practices?
That's a very good question. I don't know the answer.
Yeah, that'd be a good question for.
Yeah. I'll have to, I'll have to look at that.
I'm sure you are.
I feel like we must have some, but I don't think it's separate. I think it's all under the general liability.
General liability, I think, is.
Generally, and I don't know how the city, cities do it, but generally that's, general liability is separate from, from employment practices, has been my experience. So I would like to, I would love the answer to that.
Well, yeah, I will get you an answer on that.
And then, and then secondly, as far as, you know, if we have employment claims and things like that, which of these categories would it, would that fall under?
Right.
So we, we can see what, what's going on. And then, and that, that, that can also entail, you know, if we have an unfair labor dispute that we have to expend money on defending, you know, that kind of stuff would, would be interesting to.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I've worked with CIS in employment-related claims a number of times. It's never come up as being a separate coverage. I think it's just part of the.
Yeah, I feel like it's.
Package of liability insurance that we get through CIS, yeah.
Yeah, they try and sell it to us. I'm pretty sure if they had it separately. And, thank you. And was that all? And my question about that again, and maybe just, I, I will never ask you off the top of your head like some of my fellow counselors, because I would never feel comfortable giving that answer. But this includes fraud insurance, right? Fraud embezzlement type coverage. Do you have any idea what our level of coverage?
What the levels are, I don't, but I can get it for you, yeah.
Yep. That's always a good one, too, because upping that regularly.
Yes.
Yep. And Counselor Lopez has another one?
Thank you for entertaining a second question here. I, I really appreciate the, the attention to this that our, the remainder of the council is, has given. Regarding the harassment prevention training, as we look into this further, can we make certain that this is properly addressed in the handbook, and it may already be, as well as through any, any onboarding, future onboarding procedures?
It, so it is, there is good language in the handbook based on our most recent updates as far as respectful workplace and, and whistleblowing and, and all of those things are covered. But as far as onboarding goes, yes, I would say the department heads, when we get new staff, we go through the handbook with them.
Part of the orientation.
As part of the orientation. So I think that is covered, but I, I still agree that having something more global, a global training would be very worthwhile.
And that's with signature of new.
Right.
Okay, Byron?
You know, we've, we've focused on harassment here, but as we know, there's a, you know,
Right.
accommodations. There's also lots of subject matters. How frequently do, does management get trained on, on those items so that they can identify, you know, the signs or if somebody comes to them and, you know, talks about a disability or a health condition or something like that, that they can respond appropriately? Is there any sort of that type of training going on?
So, so I think all of us do try to attend at least one conference annually that has a lot of these management skills taught. And for example, I just returned from the Government Finance Officers Association, Association Conference, and there, there were three classes. And okay, it's my choice what I attend, but I do choose to attend those and make sure that I am more up to speed and, and ensure that there are things that I can bring back to share. And, and I've had department heads share what they have learned at their conferences as well. And I think you've found.
Chief and I've been to several.
Exactly.
But there's no formal.
There is no formal.
Process type thing.
Correct.
Darren, did you have?
No, I'm good.
All right. So interestingly, we focused on these last couple of pages. This was a multiple-page policy and risk management report together. And that would be adopted by us as Resolution Number 1889, re-adopting our amended policy. And the amendment includes that risk management report as recommended by our auditors. So after all that terrific discussion, I would entertain a motion on the front of your staff report, although say re-adopt. 1889.
I move that the city council approved Resolution 1889, which re-adopts the City of Monmouth fiscal policy as modified.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nope.
Oh, roll call. See? Wow. Gosh, I'm just trying to get done with this so we can take a break. Thank you, Phyllis. Roll call, please.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Lopez.
Aye.
Counselor Sharmer.
Yes.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Belts.
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Okay. All right. And if we have any brief council comments, I'll accept those before we take a break. Hearing none. I will adjourn our session and we'll meet back in the back. We have.
We have urban renewal still.
Do you want to do that here while we're up here? Okay. All right. Excellent. I will adjourn our regular meeting and we will reconvene as the Urban Renewal Agency Board and conduct some business. Before we take a break and meet with the planning session, we also have an executive session this evening, I believe. Yes? No? Yes.
Yes.
So we will be having that as well, and I'll be reading that script. I'll, I'll read that now, that we will be meeting later to, for the purpose of discussing labor negotiation consultations. The executive session will be held pursuant to ORS 192.662D, as in DOG, Labor Negotiator Consultations, which allows the council to meet an executive session. Designated staff will be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave. No, no decision will be made in executive session, but at the end of the executive session, we will return to open session, welcoming the audience back. And that will be after our work session this evening. So I will temp, I will adjourn the regular session of the Monmouth City Council. And I will call to order the June 14th thing, June 4th, June 4th, meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. And roll call, please, Phyllis.
Mr. Carey.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Here.
Dr. Sharmer.
Here.
Mr. Schinkel.
Here.
Mr. Silbernagle.
Here.
Ms. Belts.
Here.
Ms. Coons.
Here. And again, we have some work to do on the budget for the Urban Renewal Agency. That was also heard by the Budget Committee. And we are prepared for our report from Janet.
Consent calendar first, I think.
Oh, we have, we do have a consent agenda because we actually had minutes to approve. And those are, wait, I forgot my book here. That was from, sorry. I took my glasses off too soon. Oh, yes, we did. We had an Urban Renewal Agency meeting on March 5th. Our consent calendar consists of the minutes of that meeting.
I move approval in the March 5th meeting minutes.
Aye.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
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 And those are accepted. So now we will move to our public hearing. And the Urban Renewal Agency's Business Finance Director, Janet Chenard, will report.
And so this is a nice, quick, hopefully easy budget to look at. The total amount of the budget that we are looking at adopting is $908,810 for all ERD funds. As you know, I am proposing that we do away with the ERD Debt Service Fund and roll the debt service that, from our inter-fund loan into the operating fund, so that we have just one fund to manage. And that is part and parcel of the approved budget that came forward from Budget Committee. Other than that, I don't have any particular highlights. We are making payments on the debt. At some point in the future, your city manager will be doing a little bit more of an update on where we are with urban renewal. And that will help, help us to spend some of these good dollars that we are using to, similar to what we've been able to do for facade grants and such. And with that, I'd take any questions.
So the Urban Renewal Agency doesn't have nearly as many resolutions in its lifetime. So this would be Resolution.
Public hearing.
Oh.
Public hearing, yeah.
Yep, that's right. So first of all, I will open the public hearing for the Urban Renewal Agency and accept public comments on the budget of $908,810 for the 1920 year. Thank you. One of the founding members of the Urban Renewal Agency, they give the thumbs up. Seeing no other comments, I'll close the hearing. Seeing no other comments, I'll close the hearing. And now, we'll entertain Resolution Number 33, adopting the budget and making those same appropriations for the upcoming year.
I move approval of Resolution 33, a resolution adopting the budget, making appropriations, and a declaration of tax increment for the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or comments?
Is there a place here for the councilors to comment on this hearing?
Right now, we have a...
Yes, this is, yep.
We've got a motion on the floor.
What would it take to eliminate our Urban Renewal Agency?
Well, it expires in a few years, so...
You'd have to renew it then.
You would have to renew it then in order to, yeah.
I'm just thinking that, you know, the school districts are struggling, and it would, maybe, we would like to divert those property taxes to our school district instead of... Inasmuch as the Monmouth Engaged Retail and Restaurant Committee wants to disband, because there doesn't seem like there's anything else for them to do, and are we, do we prefer to put those tax dollars into infrastructure and landscaping for the highway or for classrooms and teachers?
That'd be a good conversation for renewal.
It would, and I think that, not just for renewal, but there may be some conversation that council would consider as City Manager McClure does his overview, when he talks about where, what projects actually are in the offing, so that we know, we have a better idea of what the scope of the dollars could do.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. We do have a, we, if we got finished early enough this evening, we did have some time set aside for that. We'll probably wait for Scott's return to go into that and really, because there are several folks here who haven't really been as engaged, just to let you know, we have an opportunity to appoint a separate Urban Renewal Agency Review Board, who would spend a lot more time on these things. They would be really going in-depth on this on a monthly basis. We used to have one of those. And then, they would bring recommendations to us, much as our Planning Commission does. And maybe the time would be ripe to reconstitute that body, to really do that work for us, and there would be a council liaison to that body. So, great, great point, Laura. We will certainly consider that. Any other comments specific to the budget? Roll call, please, Phyllis.
Please.
Sorry, we had the motion on the floor.
I know, I have to find my page.
Just to find the right one with our right names on it, because I get to vote on this.
Ms. Belts.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Aye.
Mr. Silbernagle.
Aye.
Mr. Lopez.
Aye.
Dr. Sharmer.
Yes.
Mr. Schinkel.
Yes.
Ms. Kuntz.
Aye. And that is adopted. Go forth and prepare that document. And now, I will adjourn to our joint work session. I'm going to ask if we can keep it to a six-minute break, if that's possible. We have a presenter and some of our fine Planning Commission members with us, so I don't want to keep them waiting much longer. We'll meet in the back.